They leave, we'll go back outside. If we have anybody here for public hearing, they will come in one at a time, voice their opinion, and leave. If the public is on Zoom, then Drew will unmute them, they'll speak their mind, unmute them back again. That way, you're hearing.
Probably were wanting that control for a long time.
What's that?
Being able to mute the public.
So, I know.
Is the other Russell Heath not gonna have?
Which one?
He, uh, Russell.
No, he, 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 so we have two rehearings that we'll, we'll take off right at the beginning. One of them got withdrawn. So, yes, Russell Heath withdrew his yesterday. He's gonna, he's been going different routes, so we only have the one. And that's for, uh, all action painting on, uh, South Junction Road.
Do we have any paperwork on that?
No, no, it's just a request for rehearing.
Oh, just a request for rehearing.
They'll be heard next month. You may, you guys may remember that, that's the one where it used to be, like Karen's motorcycles or whatever, or then All Action Painting bought it, they got their use, and then they came back and, uh, got a second use, which was, uh, I wanted to do a car cleaning.
Car washing.
He actually, I think, cleaned two cars there and that was it, and now he's over here on Route Three. So, they like to come back, what they wanna do is, they don't wanna do the car cleaning, might wanna give that up, but they actually wanna build storage units on there and do that as another use. So, they're coming for, asking for that, but they can discuss all of that and bring all the, the ideas, the plans, and we'll have a lot to connect. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, you ready to use bathroom before we get there? I don't feel it's gonna be a long night. I'll, I'll be happy to gather around eight to nine. Henry?
We need to turn the mic volume up because they're not hearing at all.
Yeah, Eric, I just got a text that they can't hear the, the public that's watching, can't hear any of the board members yet. Are you, so you, are you picking it up from here through the speakers?
They can't hear nothing?
They're not hearing it very well.
Damn.
Yeah, they said it was very near their own part here.
So, let me sit here and talk.
It's not, it's not gonna be you right there, it's gonna be them up there.
But it's still the same mic system, right?
Doesn't matter. Cause you're being picked up right off the mic from the camera.
Right.
So, that's a whole different. If you talk, it's, we're gonna hear you. You're not gonna hear them.
Okay, so what's your solution?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
Turning up the mics was the best solution, but they need to speak into their mics when they speak.
So, we're talking right now, does that help at all or not?
It's hard for me to, it's hard for me to tell here.
Unless, unless you're shy. Man, nobody wants to hear you anyway.
They never do.
Yeah.
Are you ready for, for me, because there's a couple people that would like to be in for the first part of the general audience.
Okay.
So, do you wanna do that and start the pledge of allegiance?
Yep, on one side.
Is there anybody here, anybody? If not, if people with the public, they wanna be in, they can.
You got the camera going already?
Okay.
Are you ready?
You got anybody out there?
I think Jesse's coming in.
Okay, go ahead.
At the meeting, I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Herb, are you gonna go back to the presentation?
Yeah.
Beautiful items, the fire hydrants are being marked and cell phones, speakers are being turned off so we don't get interrupted. And can we have a roll call?
Andrew Hale?
I'm here.
Chairman Reba-Du?
Here.
Vosel, the quarters?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Here.
Marian Alcindor?
Here.
How did you behave as absent? Alexander Forster's ex-absent? Steven Einhardt absent? Alan Reese?
Here.
Drew Arthur?
Here.
Matt Farrow?
Here.
And we have a motion that we had the notice published as necessary.
So.
Okay.
Second. And a roll call vote on that?
Andrew Hale?
Yes.
Chairman Reba-Du?
Yes.
Vosel, the quarters?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Marian Alcindor?
Yes.
And also that the minutes from last month for Marchess Meeting be approved within ways of reading of those minutes. Motion on that?
Don't make a motion.
Second.
And a roll call vote on that?
Andrew Hale?
Yes.
Chairman Reba-Du?
Yes.
Vosel, the quarters?
I'm saying.
We're gonna have to get Karen's mic closer.
Marian Alcindor?
Yes.
Hey, Henry?
All right.
You're gonna have to either speak up a little louder or move your mic right, right in front of you.
Okay, whole business.
Okay, we have one whole business, request for rehearing for Matt Murphy of All Action Painting for an additional use at Forty South Junction Road, and the previous appeal number was two zero five one.
Make a motion, we, uh, grant the request for rehearing. Second.
Roll call vote on that?
Andrew Hale?
Yes.
Chairman Reba-Du?
Yes.
Vosel, the quarters?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Marian Alcindor?
Yes.
All right, and then we go on to appeal two one seven eight, A, B, C, and D.
Okay, so, appeal twenty-one seventy-eight, A, B, C, and D. A, B, and C will be building signs, extra building signs they'd like, and then D will be the freestanding sign. I'll go through the presentation here, and then Drew will have, uh, the applicants online to do whatever, have the presentations I'd like to go through. So, this is a request to be allowed to install a second, third, and fourth building sign, which is seventy-three point three square feet more than the sixty-six point seven square feet allowed, as well as place a larger monument sign, one hundred and twenty-two point five square feet, when only fifty square feet is allowed in a service center district. Okay, so, this location, is this right here? These two parcels will merge together, so it's Huddy Nissan's going here, this is the display area, this is Route Three here, this is where Route Three splits, so Route Three here and Twenty-Two B going here. So, you'll see the whole area is zoned service center. So, this is what we're talking about, these two parcels here, and the building actually goes right here, entrance comes in this way. This is what it looked like as of yesterday, so you can tell, they already got the, uh, metal frame structure up, putting up the back wall there, and this is the, uh, front facade. This is their new entrance here, so a lot of their site work's already done, all, all of the parking areas all over to the right-hand side. This is what was presented, uh, from the applicant. So, this is the Nissan logo image, so you can see that the Nissan emblem's in the middle of the building, Nissan written on the side, and then they have the, the name of the owner on this side, so Huddy could be over here, and then they have a, uh, a large service, the word service here. So, right now, we've permitted the Nissan name right here, and then it'll be A, B, and C for these three, uh, additional signs. So, as you can see here, the Nissan wording was, was already allowed, they already permit for that, and then A is the Huddy, B is service, C is the emblem, so kinda, I got that out of order, but these signs here are informational, they're small, they're just informational sign, and then D will be the new freestanding sign. And this is considered a monument sign because of, uh, the panels we have underneath here. So, this top part complies, but once you add the, this part down here, then the sign's too large. Our ordinance states that, that, you know, if it's a, if it's panel all the way down, it's considered a monument, where if it just had a single pole in here, then it would be just a freestanding, so.
Are the informational signs?
Yes.
Part of any of these?
What's that?
Are the informational signs a part of any of these?
No. So, so, we only, we only have A, B, C, and D, these four right here. I think? So, that's our, what we, what we call a monument sign, like I said, because of these panels here. So, you can see, it's only, what, seven by six? So, they're allowed fifty square foot for a sign, so if we, so if our ordinance didn't include this, then that part of the sign would be allowed, but that's the way it's written. Okay?
Aaron should be able to talk now.
Aaron, you there?
Yep, uh, I see Julie is still muted, and also, uh, James Town.
Yeah, they muted themselves.
I mute them.
They muted themselves.
Bailey, how are you?
There we go. Uh, before we hear again, can we hear me okay before I keep going, I guess? Alan?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, you know, we were here before you, a couple months ago, before this whole, uh, new normalcy came out. Uh, at that time, we were asked to separate our application, we had one application that had all the signs together, uh, we were asked to separate it into individual signs, who better allow us to, you know, discuss each one individually, and, you know, the impacts of each sign. Uh, you know, when you look at this facility and the overall proposal, you know, it's very similar to what the town has allowed in other districts, I don't know if we wanna talk about all of them, we can take one at a time. I guess for simplicity, well, you know, starting with a monument sign out front, you know, our original thought was, you know, the red paneling being less than fifty feet would be allowed, but Alan pointed out that, you know, by the ordinance, you know, monument sign, by definition, you have to include the base. Uh, I provided some color photographs, I think that should have been circulated to the board members.
Yes, all the board members have it.
Yep, uh, so when you look at, uh, you know, Della Honda, Della Toyota, and also Garvey Hyundai, uh, you know, right, wrong, and different, some of those were looked at as monument signs, some of them were looked at as, you know, regular, uh, pylon signs, uh, so when all those parties came before this board, you know, it was either determined that it was only a very small variance because the sign panel was, you know, sixty square feet, or the logo itself is smaller than fifty and didn't need a variance. You know, so obviously, when you use the definition of monument sign, you know, we are over the fifty feet, you know, we're actually a hundred and twenty-two square feet, but, you know, looking at all the others, you know, how they're approved, you know, yeah, right, wrong, whatever, you know, the Garvey roadside sign is a hundred and sixty-five square feet if you measure it by the definition, definition of monument. The Della Toyota is up over two hundred square feet, uh, the Della Honda is actually eighty-six, that's a bit shorter. Uh, so, you know, in our minds, you know, this is very similar to what all the other dealerships have received, although some of them were not required to get variances because they were interpreted differently, again, you know, but what's there, how it will feel today on all of the competing dealerships compared to what we're proposing is very similar. Uh, again, as I were, you know, we are smaller than, you know, both Garvey and Toyota. Again, you know, the red panel is less than a fifty square feet, you know, this is Nissan standard to have skirting, so if we were required to take off the skirting, the sign panel would not change, uh, but we would have to custom order legs to, you know, fit that post, you know, so that there would be, you know, finished material and not raw steel, so I don't know if the board wants to take each one individually, or we wanna discuss each of them.
Let's move on to the next one, Aaron.
You wanna go ahead and do each one, or just do them all at once?
Let's, let's hear each one, then we can go back and do it, vote on them independently.
So, go ahead and give your justification for all, all four, and then they'll come back and discuss each one individually after that.
Just, I mean, uh, Alan, you're very clear.
Yep.
As far as we heard, the board's kinda soft spoken out, the mic just parked from them.
Yep, I'll, I'll help, I'll help translate, and then, they, they can keep me in line.
We'll work our way through it together.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, similarly then, you know, sorry, so, you know, five definitions of the ordinance were allowed, you know, sixty-seven, sixty-three point seven square feet, so the Nissan sign is only fifty-five, so that would fall below that, therefore the Nissan would be allowed. Uh, so, you know, taking the easier ones, obviously, the Huddy sign, you know, the nameplate, uh, and also the service sign, you know, the nameplate is seventeen square feet, uh, when you look at, you know, the others in town that you see before you, uh, you know, Garvey, uh, had a nameplate with a symbol next to it, uh, Honda was actually, uh, the word Della Honda was combined, uh, so that was forty square feet, but again, you know, the request before you is very similar to what this board had reviewed, Knight Automotive was, you know, twenty square feet, so again, very similar to what other dealerships have received, uh, so when you look at the word Huddy, you know, I don't see that as, you know, although it's a digital sign, I don't think it's, you know, excessive. Similarly, service, uh, service is eleven square feet, uh, Knight had, you know, thirty-three square feet, the word service, Garvey Hyundai actually has service with a logo next to it, that you see in that photograph, so that was forty-two square feet, Della Honda's service sign was sixteen square feet, Toyota Scion was eighteen square feet, so we're actually smaller than all the other dealerships, and then what's ironic is if you actually combine the Nissan sign and the service sign square footage wise, that would be actually what the ordinance allows, so to kinda put in perspective, you know, those two together, we would still actually be okay for total area signage. Uh, so again, the, the Huddy wording, the service wording, relatively small. The, you know, obviously, the bigger one that comes into play is the shield itself, so you have the Nissan red panel, where, you know, Nissan, when we look at that also, I mean, the crest itself, uh, my notes are here. So, the crest itself is eighty-one square feet, but when you consider the entire red panel, I don't know if you just, maybe the next slide has a blow up to a moment on, but, so when you look at the, uh, red panel, you add, I don't know if you have the next one, make back to, the, uh, when you add the red panel, obviously, that increases the size of the sign. Uh, when you look at what Della Honda got, you know, they were granted basically the H, so the crest of the Honda was just the H symbol, which was forty square feet, and then, or forty-eight square feet, or, you know, and then they put it on a circular tower, so they really made that whole piece into a sign, and I know that was a concern of the board last time, that, you know, this is considered a sign because the panel is on, you know, Della Toyota, uh, you know, their emblem on the building and name actually equated to a hundred square feet. So, you know, when you look at the crest itself, you know, I don't think it's out of line of what all the, all the dealerships got, uh, when you look at, say, Garvey, uh, you know, the Garvey symbol on the building, I'm sorry, the Honda, get the right one here, yeah, so Garvey, you know, put a solid branding of that brown, and then use larger letters to make it highlight, so, you know, there's that Toyota, the Toyota symbol was a hundred square feet, you know, we are slightly larger than that, but that's really just because of the fact that we have, you know, the red panel. Uh, whether or not, you know, Nissan normally, obviously, the silver, you know, shield would not show up very well on the silver siding, uh, you know, so, you know, again, this is Nissan's prototype, uh, they do make some larger ones, but, you know, based on the scale of the building and size of the building, you know, we don't feel if these signs are out of proportion for the building and/or out of character to what the other dealerships have ingrained in the past, so.
Aaron?
That's kind of a full review. Uh, obviously, take any questions from the board, or Jim or Julie wanna add anything?
They have questions.
Okay, chairman has a question, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Aaron, do you have any of the information from their existing location, all the signs that they have there?
He would like you to compare, you know, existing locations to this location when it comes to the sign sizes, is that right?
Yes.
I couldn't hear that question, I'm sorry.
Is, are the, the signs that were proposed here at this location in Plasberg, are they a similar size to, uh, other locations nearby, other Nissan dealerships, or do other dealerships have larger signs, or what's the sign package based off on?
Yeah, the sign package, uh, Nissan product is based on, yeah, the type of community, basically the population base, you know, so that dictates not only the sign proportions, but also the size of the dealership, obviously, the, the larger community, there would be a larger showroom, there would be more service bays, uh, more, you know, back of the shop for repairs, more display parking, uh, so again, they base this on the population, so, you know, they do have other signage, you know, that would, you know, go up if it's that little scale, they do have a package for their rural spot, which I think the closest one, I think, is, uh, I wanna say Butland, Vermont, 'cause on my head, Julie, there's a small dealership, which is about half the size of this one, obviously, because the building is half the size, the signage is proportionally smaller.
I think the question was more, how is the package you're asking for now compared to what's on the store on Route Nine currently? Right?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you care to sign sizes here to propose them to the ones that are currently on, uh, Route Nine? At the Nissan dealer there?
First of all, the, the building on Route Nine doesn't conform to standards required by Nissan present, and secondly, this store is substantially larger. In order to do, comply with the new branding requirements from Nissan, they're required to put up signage comparable to what's shown on the scale, the, uh, slide.
Yeah, I mean, looking quickly, I can find out if I don't have that number in front of me, I know the monument sign's about the same, but again, it's an older prototype, so it's up, again, doesn't comply to their current standard, so we're not allowed to relocate any of the signs off the existing building to this new facility, requiring everything to be new.
Uh, what's the reasoning behind the two Nissan signs on the front of the building?
So, uh, Sharon wants to know the reasoning for two Nissan signs, so you, you must be talking about the emblem sign as well as the word Nissan? So, that red emblem sign, as well as the actual word Nissan on the right-hand side, why do we have to have that up there twice, why is it repeated?
It's actually not up there twice, but the, one is the badge, and the other is the Nissan trand, so Nissan's badge with the circle, that's the, uh, any sim, car symbol, Mercedes or whatever, that would, would, it's up there, the fact that they put their name in it, that's the way they're, they're, uh, trademarking their badge, very similar to the H in Honda, they don't spell it out, Honda doesn't spell it out, but it's the same, absolutely same, uh, concept, and consequently, you have Honda on, on Della, uh, you have Della Honda on the front of the building, you also have the badge, the exact same concept. Actually, it's the same as, uh, Garvey, actually, Garvey's got, uh, two badges on there, they've got a badge for Hyundai, which is in silver, then they've got the name Garvey, and then had, over the portico for the service bay, they've got, again, the Hyundai badge and the word service, so there, this is the way the factories brand these things, if you look at their, uh, monument sign, they've all got the exact same thing, Toyota, same thing.
Do we know what the length of those other buildings are? I couldn't hear you.
Do you have any, uh, comparisons to the length of those buildings compared to the length of this building?
No, uh, Garvey is actually, uh, skinnier, uh, Toyota would be very similar in size, uh, Honda is a little bit skinnier also, skinnier and deeper, uh, but we, this is bigger than both the Garvey and the Honda, it's, I mean, slightly smaller than the Toyota.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody would like to speak to this matter?
Okay, so we're calling for a public hearing, while Drew's going out to find anybody who wants to come in, I will say, it did go down to the county, uh, they haven't had a meeting since March, so therefore, the rule about majority plus one does not apply because they didn't have a meeting.
Okay, nobody would like to speak to this matter, so we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll go back and review the signs.
There's nobody on, uh, Zoom that wants to do it either?
I don't know, I'm just. So, I guess my only question, or one of my questions would be, granted, we have all these other dealerships with similar design, but I wasn't here, I don't know when that was, if that was under a previous ordinance or not, um, as opposed to just using it as a precedent, I'm just wondering if the sign ordinance changed since some of those other dealerships put up their signs?
So, Vosel's asking, you know, Aaron, you brought up those other examples, and he was just curious, when did, uh, when did those actually get put up, with a previous ordinance, was it the current ordinance, or what, and did the, uh, requirements actually change?
Yep, the, right, so to clear the, you know, the ordinance, you know, there was an amendment two thousand and twelve, uh, going quickly, pull up the prior appeals. Your... So, you know, some of them created in two thousand and twelve, you know, the difference is, is that the, you know, the ordinance as far as what is required for signage, square footage, and the number of signs has not changed, obviously, your ordinance is always only allowed one square, one sign, it's pretty much always been the same, half square foot for linear foot along the road, and then the multiplier, you know, this situation, the multiplier hasn't changed, there's been amendment two thousand and twelve that allows an increase to go beyond the hundred, uh, but thirty percent increase for being over fifty feet, so really, every one of these dealerships, you know, I think, looking at Toyota was actually two thousand and twelve, uh, you know, some of the others, Polaris Suzuki is two thousand and seven.
Do we know if any of these other dealerships are further off the road than, uh, this one to add the multiplier, or not?
Uh, so, Vosel's asking the distance that the building's off the road, and I think it, it varies, each, like I know Garvey's pretty far off the road, some of them are closer to it, to the road, so.
Yeah, so again, they were all pretty much, if you, you know, being through the party decisions, you boil all of them, and, you know, incorporation for this meeting, and looking at all the party decisions, they all basically fall under the same, uh, guidelines, you know, they all basically were allowed sixty-six, and, you know, asked for multiple signs, and, you know, because what was interesting is that, like I said, the old ordinance prior to two thousand and twelve had the multiplier of one-third, but did not have the additional multiplier beyond that, so the further distance didn't give you that extra multiplier, uh, so again, every one of these was viewed basically almost the identical requirement, so allowed sixty-six square feet in one sign, where they've all proposed additional signage, you know, what is different, I'll be honest with you, is that when you look at some of the older ones, you get, you know, it's the interpretation of what is the sign area, you know, that's gone around and around, you know, when you look at, like I mentioned, when they did the Toyota monument sign at the street, if you beat the minutes, they talked about the area of the Toyota and the Scion symbol being, you know, seventy square feet, and said, well, that's only slightly over the fifty that's permitted, therefore it's okay, but, you know, they did not account for the whole monument sign, and the definition of monument hasn't changed, it just happened to be, that's the way the board looked at it when they reviewed it, similar to the Honda, they determined that the blue part of the Honda was less than fifty square feet, therefore it's an allowed sign, but again, they didn't account for the skirting, and the ordinance has not changed in that man, manner, it just happened to be, that's the way it was reviewed by the code officer and the board, so, you know.
But in those other ones, because I wasn't in, part of any of these other dealerships, but I mean, when did the town all of a sudden decide that we need to look at the monument regulation?
So, so what happened was, uh, when you had a change in personnel, then the interpretation of the new personnel was different than the interpretation of the old personnel, so even though the language didn't change in the ordinance when it came to what the definition of mine was, the interpretation was, so the previous person, when it came to the, the bottom skirting part of it, didn't think that that was part of the sign. The new personnel said, no, I believe it is part of the sign, so now it became, so the language didn't change, just the interpretation changed, so that's why some of these are older ones, like Garvey's one of the older ones, that one got interpreted, it was only the emblem that got up there as a sign, everything else isn't, and then what happened was later on, you know, I started pointing out and saying, oh, well, Bobcat on, uh, Route Three, if it was today, the whole thing would be a sign, but when it got approved, it wasn't, it was only the, the, uh, symbolism of it.
So, do we keep making the same mistake going forward, or, I guess the other question is, I don't have any details on how far off the road, I mean, what about the visibility and the ten-foot minimum, uh, height, uh, for a freestanding sign and so forth? Part of that was all part of, I think, the monument regulation, because if it's three foot or under, it was not ideal for visibility purposes, but these signs are blocking entire ten-foot, seven-foot.
Right, so, so, when it comes to the placement of a monument sign, it has to be further back from the front of the road, which I believe, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong on this, I think this one here is. Which I believe, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong on this, I think this one here is placed back further? So, so, so.
I didn't see anything in there.
So, when it comes to the ten-foot rule, that doesn't apply because it's monument is farther back. It's when you're five feet off a freestanding sign, that's when you have that visibility to make your left and right hand turns out of the driveway. You don't want blockage. That's where those poles come in.
Right, what I'm saying is, I don't see that in the application as to what that distance is to know, it doesn't meet that or not meet that.
No, actually, you're showing it on the, right on the. In this situation, you know, what you need is, you know, the roadway in front of this facility is fairly wide. So, from the curb line of Route three, there's about twenty-four feet to property line, and then ten more feet to the sign. So, the sign is, you know, thirty-five feet off the, off the curb line. So that if you were leaving this facility, you know, your entire car is between the curb line and the sign. So, you know, the sign, you know, monumented, you know, or skirted, doesn't, you know, would not pose any site protection at all.
So, you have, you know.
It has to be off the sidewalk, right? If it's a public drive, it's got to be off the sidewalk and be in the furthest.
Right, yeah, you can't, you can't over, we don't let anything overlap the sidewalk.
Right, the back side, right, so the back side of the sidewalk is about fifteen feet from the property line, you know. There's fifteen, you grasp that the state owns behind the sidewalk, then ten more feet to where we can place the sign by ordinance.
Yep. So.
So, it's fairly far off the road compared to all the others.
Yeah, so they're complying here. It's, it's a difference between five feet off property line or fifteen feet off property line. They're fifteen feet off the property line.
Okay.
All right, let's look at the first one, which is the building sign for Huttig, which is seventeen square feet.
I just want to get care of clarification that all these signs are going to be, the total of the overage is the sixty-six square feet over the allowed?
What's allowed, correct, yep.
I myself don't see too much of a problem with.
Vassal's, hang on, I'm gonna, it's the other way around. Sixty-six is what they're allowed. They're going to be seventy-three point three square feet over the sixty-six.
With all three signs?
Correct, with all three building signs, yes.
Does that encompass the emblem versus the total?
Yes, so, so that, if you approved it, it includes.
No, I'm talking about number C.
Yep.
If we're not going to include the red box.
That includes the red box.
So, without the red box, it would be what?
We didn't calculate that.
What's that?
We didn't calculate that without the red box.
So, are we looking at the emblem as previous Hs and everything else? Or what are we doing? Because obviously Honda's not the full, for the rooftop size sign, right?
It's, it's gonna be the old red area with the red in the center.
Aaron, do you know the area of the?
It seems to be in conflict, I guess, with the other dealership.
The emblem going on the building? So, minus the red background?
Yeah, the shield itself, the circle of the, you know, the Nissan word in it is eighty-one, eighty-one point two-two square feet.
And what is it with it?
One hundred and ninety point one-two.
So, about half?
Correct.
So, eighty?
So, we're gonna knock off all the hundred and ten feet?
Yes. So, it's about half the size.
So, a hundred and ten feet?
Are we going to?
So, you're gonna be, you're gonna be voting on each of these individually, or each their own request? You should ask the applicant to tell you how much of a variance each individual one would require, because then you're gonna know, to approve A, you're looking at a twenty percent variance potentially. You're gonna want to know how much of a variance each one individually is, not the total, because you may include A and C and not B. Because you're voting separately, because they applied the right way and break, broke them all up. Each one should be voted on with the knowledge of how much of a variance that one vote requires.
But the total square footage of the building has to be taken into consideration.
Sure, right, but you want to know, like, honey, that, A.
Right, but what I'm saying, and I'm trying to get to whether we're over or not over on the, on the total, by looking at the emblem separately from the square part of the square footage, if we're gonna be consistent with the other dealerships, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, but the bill, the building itself is only allowed a certain amount of square footage?
I understand that, but that's.
Anything, anything, so, so, let me go to example here, applicants can follow along.
What you're saying, if we're over by seventy-three square feet.
Right.
But you subtract a hundred and ten, because we're only gonna look at the emblem for Nissan and not the red square for, then we're not over the total square footage is what I'm, is what I'm trying to point out.
Nissan itself takes.
Yeah, no, you still are.
Nissan itself is the signage for the building.
If I can clarify, right, so if you look at the linear footage of the building, it's a hundred and thirty-five feet. So, if you figure half a square foot for linear foot with a cap at fifty, so therefore, half would be, you know, seventy-some odd square feet, but we're only allowed fifty. And then because the building is eighty-five feet off the roadway, I'm allowed a one-third multiplier. So, that takes me from the fifty, you know, to sixty-six point seven square feet being allowed. So, if you were to just look at the areas, the word Nissan, which is allowed in the after sign, from having submitted for that, and you add service, the two of those together would basically equal that sixty-six point seven. So, the word Huttig, which is, what am I gonna do, seventeen square feet? That would be seventeen square feet over what's allowed. And then you look at the shield, again, if you looked at just the circle emblem at eighty-one square feet, you're eighty-one plus the seventeen over that sixty that's allowed. So, you are, you know, a hundred and ten percent, on my head, over what's permitted, if you just look at the shield and the word Huttig. Plus, you are also looking at the variance to have multiple signs.
Okay, so, so what I'm getting at.
So, we're more than what's, it's seventy-three square feet.
So, yeah, as Vassal's finding a mistake that we made, we, we put on there only, you're only seventy-three point three square feet over, but you're well over that. If that thing, if that thing's a hundred and something, you've got to be a hundred and something over.
So, I mean, if you were just, I mean, I guess, you know, we're looking at just the shield, you know, like I said, that's eighty-one, you know, plus the seventeen, you know, so that's ninety-eight square feet over the sixty-six. So, you know, you're a hundred and forty percent increase.
I could, for the record, just make a comment. Uh, there was a conversation a minute ago about the fact that there is a new interpretation out of the building department. I think the law is fairly clear that actually, what the building department determines is not binding upon this board. This board is obviously constrained by its prior precedent. And if the precedent has been pretty clear, as indicated in the photos, in my understanding of the various dealerships, signage that's comparable, in fact, is less. If you look at the column, blue column on the Honda store, I don't know, it's a twentieth of an acre? It's gigantic. And you're comparing that to the red square of eighty-some odd square feet. We're well within what's already been allowed. And, and again, as an administrative agency, you're constrained to follow your precedent, not what the building inspectors' interpretation is.
I'd have to say, we wouldn't be stuck to any precedent if it's a new person on the board, if we didn't do it in the last fifteen years. I, I wouldn't want to keep doing the same wrong thing for the wrong reason each time, personally.
I apologize, I heard about every third word that's probably, because I'm old and my years are failing, but I have a hard time hearing them, so I apologize.
So, Vassal's making the point that, you know, the people who made those decisions back at that time are not the same people who are making decisions today? So, when it comes to the precedent that you're talking about, those are a different set of five members. So, those five members, their interpretation, they made their decision. These five members should be allowed to make their interpretation, their decision, based on today. Is that correct, Vassal?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that I agree with that. It's a board decision by, by nomenclature, not by members. You're gonna proceed as you determine.
Right, and again, Toyota was 2012, so it's not like something that was approved, you know, twenty-five years ago. You know, under the same ordinance that you currently have before you today.
It wasn't with me, so I, I mean, eight years ago, I wasn't here. Sorry.
No, I guess, I guess, like, that dealership, right, that dealership was constructed, you know, under the current zoning ordinance and was approved variances or signage. And we're just asking for a similar treatment under that same ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to adjust these A, B, C, and D in order, and get started on A.
A is the Huttig sign, I believe.
Right. I have, uh, no objection to A, and I would like to make a motion that that is approved.
All right, we got a second for that one?
Oh, second.
And show hands on that. And roll call vote.
Andrew Yea.
Yes.
Chairman Revie.
Yes.
Vassal LaCorte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
And that's seventeen square feet.
For variance A, it's been approved for the heading word?
Thank you.
The second one would be service, eleven square feet. To me, that's basically a directional type sign.
I have no problem with that either. I make a motion that we approve, uh, B.
Do we just make a stipulation, though, whether we're gonna approve it as a sign or a directional?
Well.
Because if it's a directional, then it wouldn't.
As he, as he brought, as he brought out, you don't necessarily have to approve the square footage. You can just approve that it's a second sign, because it actually follows in the square footage of Nissan under the sixty-six square feet.
Right, so it's not something we would have to vote on?
Well, because it's a second sign on the, it's more than, more than one sign on there, so you can.
So, it's not the square footage, we're just adding, yeah, gotcha.
Gotcha.
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, we need to have somebody second it.
Second.
Okay, and show of hand. And roll call vote.
Andrew Yea.
Yes.
Chairman Revie.
Yes.
Vassal LaCorte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, so variance B is approved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And C.
We're getting there, hang on.
It'll be easy once we're done.
Problem I have with, uh, C is the duplication between the monument sign and this new sign that they want to put on the front of the building.
And we do have Nissan on the front of the building already.
Right.
That's not even shown on our, in our discussion right now.
I believe that was new, right? You didn't hear me?
What's new?
The, uh, C.
No, it's always been, it's always been part of the package.
No, not that one, I'm talking about, uh, C, the large sign. That was, uh, newly proposed, wasn't it?
No, no, all these signs are still the same ones that were brought back, back in, uh, February. So, they're still the same, all we did was divide, uh, break them out into individual ones. They're all still the same size, still the same signs proposed.
So, just to be clear, when you, you know, Garvey Hyundai has Hyundai with the shield and Hyundai with the shield on the building. You know, Honda has the Honda H on the sign, the Honda H on the building. Toyota has the Toyota crest with the word Toyota on the sign, and then Toyota with the crest on the building. Yeah, because they are ninety degrees to each other, so you're, you don't see, as you're driving down the road, you see one, and you approach the front of it, and you see the other. So, they're not next to each other or duplicating by, you know, with this direction of travel. But every dealership has what's on that roadside sign that's on the building. I think that's very similar with almost every monument or freestanding sign out there that, whether it says Lowe's out the street, but Lowe's on the building. You know, so it's very common to have the same emblem or symbol on your street sign as you do your building sign.
So, sign C is actually the shield logo. And that is either a hundred and ninety square feet or a B one square feet.
All right, depending on the way you look at it, with the red, it's the hundred, and if it's the, just the symbol itself, it's eighty.
I guess, similarly, looking at your monument sign, you know, if you looked at the red shield, so the red emblem in the shield, similar to the way the board looked at Honda, that would be actually less than fifty square feet and would be permitted. And that really, you know, we're asking for is to be allowed to have that skirting below the red, so.
We're not talking about the monument.
Yeah, we're still talking about number C, the emblem on the building.
According to you.
And it's actually less on the signage, it's on the, uh, Garvey Hyundai sign. The Garvey Hyundai monument sign, they've got a symbol, they've got the name Hyundai, and they've also got the name Garvey.
So, the question is, are we considering that skirting an architectural feature of the building with the shield?
We're still talking about C, though.
That's what I'm talking about. The red background, are we considering that is an architectural feature of the building with the sign, the shield, as the signage? Or is the red background considered part of the sign?
I believe it's obvious that the red is going to make that shield stick out that much more with the building being silver.
That's correct, but is that protrusion considered in ar- are we considering that as an architectural feature of the building? Or?
Well, based on their arguments, I would say it almost would have to be, and that's not, because what they're saying is on the monument sign, if there was a freestanding sign, it would include the red area surrounding the emblem. So, if we would be treating it consistently based on their application of what they've submitted, we'd almost have to make the argument, we're looking at the emblem plus the red square, because that's what they're making the argument on the other sign.
Then technically, those tiles on the building can be coated red, and you would not need that big protrusion. And you could reduce the size, just having it mounted on the building and just consider the shield. If the background was just pink and red.
They're still discussing the, uh, the red background, if that actually constitutes part of the sign or not.
And I guess I would ask the board to look back at how the town handled Honda. Uh, because, you know, that circular feature on the front of the building, you know, serves no purpose architect, you know, as far as function of the building besides branding that facility as being a Honda dealership with a large H crest on it. So, when you look at the size of that blue, you know, half-circle, that goes, you know, five feet above the building all the way to the ground, and is, you know, twenty-five feet wide, you know, that thing's, you know, a thousand square feet. You know, so when you look at what we're doing, it's, you know, a tenth of what the Honda dealership.
Boy, Honda.
I would say that the Honda blue, uh, cylinder with the A sign on it is actually a trademark of Honda. All these symbols are a trademark of various manufacturers. So, that that entire blue cylinder should have been counted on, period, that someone's concerned about. Should, the entire cylinder should have been counted, which again is, I can't even do the calculus, it's got to be, um, square feet, I don't know.
You had a question, Eric?
Yeah, I just, I would just consider that if they would have left the building the same color and put the H on it, they just happened to play into that feature and they painted it blue. I mean, if the, the top of the Nissan, you took three or four of those tiles and painted them red, and then mounted the shield on it, then you'd be back to the eighty-one square feet.
Well, that's all well and good, but that's not the situation, that's not what we're being asked to approve.
So, whether it's eighty-one feet or a hundred and ninety feet? As far as the overage, I guess, of what's allowed?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, you look at it and you say, you know, figure out which, which way you think that that should be considered a sign. And then if you're willing to approve either one, it doesn't matter, it's not gonna change anything, it's still gonna look just like that. Still gonna have the red background, still gonna have the emblem on it. You're just justifying the variance by thinking, okay, only the emblem's actually signed, so it's only eighty-some square feet I'm actually approving opposed to a hundred and some square feet, which is up to you guys, totally up to you guys, how you want to do it.
I go back to what Vassal was saying, that, uh, there's a duplication there between the monument sign and the badge on the building. I mean, we're looking at a lot more feet of signage than is allowed. What would be the problem with putting the same size, uh, on C as is on the monument sign?
I guess, you know, when you look at the monument sign, you know, when you look at, uh, when you look at the elevation, the, you know, monument sign is only, you know, six feet wide by, you know, seven feet tall, where the red panel on the building, you know, is twelve feet wide, you know, it, you know, so it's twice as tall, twice as wide. So, if you put that one, that size sign on the building, you really won't even see it. The word, you know, Nissan would be, you know, a quarter of what you see now.
Well, you'd still get the idea that the sign was there. I think people have a pretty good idea that it's a Nissan dealership with the one that's on the, as I look at it on the right side of the building. Again, duplication of the monument sign and the sign on the front of the building, I'm not in favor of.
Did you guys get that? So, so, sure, is it in the favor of having a duplication of those two signs, one on the building, one on the freestanding? Since you have the word Nissan written on the right-hand side, then justification using, you wouldn't be able to see Nissan in the emblem. Since you have the word Nissan written on the right-hand side, then justification using, you wouldn't be able to see Nissan in the emblem. It would recognize the emblem no matter what size it would be.
Right, I guess there really, you know, Honda has Honda and the symbol on their freestanding sign, they have Honda and their shield on their building. You look at, you know, Hyundai has not only Hyundai and the crest on the sign in the building, they also have Gargi on both. And then Toyota has the word Toyota and their crest on both the building and the sign. So again, it's identical to all the other dealerships and, you know, basically in line with your international on whatever branding standards. You know, I could, you know, I would understand if we had signage on the side of our building where you would see both of them at the same time, where you would say, oh, it's duplicate. But if you're driving down Route Three, you know, you're gonna see the pylon sign, and then the branding of the building is something that, once you bring that to you, you no longer see the monument sign. You know, they are ninety degrees to each other, so you're not, they're not side by side, you're not duplicating it, it'll view that you're looking, you know, straight on both of them.
I know everybody's got their different symbols. I guess we're looking at what you've submitted for Toyota. I only see Toyota ones plus their emblem. And same thing with Honda, I only see Honda ones with their emblem. Here, come back to Sherwin's argument, is we got a Nissan Nissan, uh, twice, and I don't know. To try to minimize the hundred and ninety square feet overage that you're asking for, you know, why not make it the same six foot by six foot as the, uh, potential monument freestanding sign?
When the signage, uh, rules were rewritten, the idea was to reduce the amount of signage in town. And that's what we're trying to do. And what happened with Honda, Toyota, those are all in the past, what we have to deal with is now.
Right, so, you know, when you look at the elevation of the building, can I be put that slide down?
Alan, can you do the next, the next slide?
Oh.
My elevation. Oh, so, right, well, that one. The gray bands on top of the glass facade is, you know, nine and a half feet tall. So, you know, the idea of putting a red sign that is smaller than that, you know, would be, you know, put a postage stamp on that gray band, that it really doesn't carry, you know, the aesthetics and the architectural balance of, you know, creating that feature over the front door, like the larger red.
What is this, what is the height of the Nissan, uh, on the right-hand side of the building as I look at?
Your Nissan letters?
Two, two point eight feet.
So a six-foot sign would be larger than that, right?
So he's comparing the, if I put a six-foot Nissan sign up there, your Nissan wording on the right-hand side's only two point eight feet, so it would be larger, taller than that, is what he's pointing out.
Yeah, I mean, the word Nissan, the Nissan wording is basically three feet tall. So basically, if you put a six-foot crest up there, it would basically be the size of the, you know, the N and the I of RDS, which, you know, becomes a point where it's not even legible, you know, so it really doesn't carry, you know, that value anymore. You know, honestly, I mean, the, the red architectural feature, you know, it generates if you took the crest off of it and left the red architectural feature, then it's no longer a sign and, you know, carries the aesthetic of the building. There's the idea of carrying the branding with that, so if you, you know, I, I just feel that aesthetically, making that red object smaller takes away the aesthetic of the building.
The size of the shield itself, it's gotta be just about nine feet.
The, the size of the shield's long building, that's probably, well, you said eighty-some square feet, so that's probably about nine feet tall.
Eighty-one square foot shield.
So, do you have a diameter of that?
It is eight foot four.
Eight foot four is the diameter of that shield.
It's nine feet, so that would fit right on there nicely. So anyways, if we wanna make a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we don't approve the, uh, authority of this, uh.
If you guys go through and make your motion, I'd have you clarify what you're determining as a sign. Are you determining the red background as part of that sign or just the shield as a sign?
I think my, my thought on that personally is being consistent with the application that they're looking at the red part of the signs as being part of their signage that we would have to be consistent.
And we have to be clarified that further, the reason why the app, the revised application identified it that way, it's been at the February meeting, the board instructed me to include that red as part of the signage. So is there an interpretation that it wasn't in February? The board told me it was, and that's why we came back to you with the application that reflects the guidance you gave me in February.
Yeah, and what they're doing is they're just reaffirming that right now, that that red is actually part of the sign.
So right now we have a motion that it's going to be to deny this, and having the red be considered a total portion of the sign. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And show of hands on that. And roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
I would disagree.
Sherman Revenue.
I just need to make a clarification. When you say disagree, the motion was to deny it, so are you saying no, or?
Yeah, I disagree with the motion.
Okay.
Vassal Report.
Uh, no.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a three-two vote to deny the variance of C.
And then we move on to the monument sign. And again, it's the question of the skirting down the bottom compared to the sign on top. And it does sound like a lot of these other dealerships had that considered as the top portion as they have the signage portion oversized. And not the whole shield on the bottom. And actually, the top portion of the sign itself is almost in lines, correct?
Yes.
I have no problem with D. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, D.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Roger's got a second. Got a show of hand on that?
I'd just make a comment, though, that I, I disagree with the fact that we were overlooking the entire monument definition for this, but I think.
We're not necessarily overlooking it, we're just saying that we're going to approve the monument sign.
Right, but based on the discussion that, oh, all these other ones have done it and so forth, but I think for consistency with the dealerships in our town, that it aesthetically is more consistent by having it the way it is.
In their regard, I'd ask the board to set forth in the record those facts which lead it to believe that it is acceptable to deviate from its prior decisions for similar applications.
I didn't understand that. What is he asking?
Can you clarify what you're asking, because, uh, they're talking about, uh, the motion was made to approve the variance D?
I'm talking about the monument sign. There was a reference to the monument sign, which was just denied, and I think the law is pretty clear.
No, 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 sir, the monument sign was not denied. What they're, they're in the middle of making a motion to approve the monument sign, he just wanted to clarify that, uh, the base of that is still considered part of a sign.
Okay, my understanding was you denied the monument sign, sign as submitted.
No, so, variance, variance C.
They denied sign C.
Yeah, not sign D, sign C. Which is the emblem on the building.
Okay.
So.
Then I would ask, okay, then let's go ahead with D, but I'm gonna ask the same question with respect to C, that the, that be set forth in the record what material changes that have occurred.
Okay.
All right, so we're on to D, which is the monument sign, and, uh, Sherman and Roger had made motions, we had, please, we had a show of hands, and we need to do a roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Sherman, Sherman Revenue.
Yes.
Vassal Report.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, so variance D is approved. Now, the question was on the variance C, the denial, the reasoning for the denial, you would like you to state your, uh, your reasons for that. And I'll summarize it, and if I'm wrong or something, you can point it out to me and I'll let him know. So what they, the reason for denial was they took the entire red background as part of the sign package, and they felt that that wasn't needed, since you had a monument sign out there that had the same stuff on there as well as you have in the word Nissan on the building. They felt that you could make that sign actually smaller, and then that would be, uh, more of an approval, more of a approvable item, but the way it sits now, it was not. Does that sound about right, Admiral?
I would say, I don't know that we made the determination because of including the red here, I'm just saying that if that was already predetermined, uh, at the prior meeting, that it's just, the duplication, I think, of the word was more of a question to try to bring in compliance with the size of it.
The duplication with the word Nissan and Nissan on the emblem?
That's not what Sherman, Sherman was saying.
Sherman, yeah.
Yeah, and I would add that if, if the whole package is over, or all four packages are over the footage, uh, allowed, and that really is the major reason for it, you know, there was a way to possibly decrease that, how much it was over.
Okay, so the first thing, Sherwin, yours was based on having that emblem said Nissan, as well as having the wording that said Nissan, how's the duplication?
As well as what Roger said on the, uh, the fact that trying to reduce the, uh, overage of the sign.
Okay, so, so based on trying to make the, the least, uh, variance possible, they thought it was a duplication with the word Nissan, as well as the word Nissan in the emblem, and then that being eighty or a hundred and some square feet?
My, my question, I appreciate it determined, but my question relates to how is that determination with respect to the submitted application different than the prior applications that were approved? And I think that's what the law requires.
Okay.
It was essentially the same facts as the other dealerships. And unless somebody sets forth an explanation as to what the basis for the change is, I think, as they discuss what my client wants to know, they must, asking the material changes circumstances, that's what the court appeals to. Somebody needs to set forth on the record so a judge has the opportunity to determine what material changes allegedly were considered by the board in reaching its decision.
I'll refer that to you, Matt.
Do you guys understand what he's asking? So basically, he's saying you approved Gargi, you approved Toyota, you approved the Honda, or this board, not necessarily these people, this board approved those. What's changed from those approvals to now that's saying, that's allowing you to disapprove this application on your estimation? He wants to know what that change is, what's changed factually in your minds, and from this board's point of view, again, different people.
Well, this isn't the same board, I don't know that you can say that anything has changed, because this board makeup is not the same as it was before, so there's nothing factual that anyone here can go back on to say, oh, well, back then I thought this, but now I think something else, because it's not the same board makeup. I don't know how you can compare facts on two different, you know, sets of people, I guess.
That's the viewpoint of each individual member of the board right now.
Okay, so if you didn't catch that, the difference that they're pointing out is the makeup of the board? So them not knowing, you know, why the board previously made decisions on those projects. It wasn't them that sat on that particular board, so if they're sitting on the board now, this is the way they interpret it.
I, I appreciate that. The only comment I would have, and then I will promise I'll be quiet about it, is that would mean a municipality could change its board, whatever it determined in order to change the outcome, and that's not what the law allows. It doesn't mean material change in the circumstances, not in the composition of the board, but I'll leave it at that.
We done with these variances then?
Yes.
Ready to move forward next? Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two one eight one.
Jesse, Jesse.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'm gonna go through and present the project, and then I'll turn it over to you if you have any further comments for the board, okay?
No, I'm not ready, you are. Sorry.
Tell me when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay, pill number twenty-one eighty-one, Erica Lee Leonard to Valhalla Lane. Requesting to be allowed to keep a ten-by-sixteen carport which was constructed without a permit on the north side of the residence, which has a zero setback, which does not meet the minimum twenty-foot side drive setback in the R-three district. What's that? So this is out on Champl- out of Champlain Park on Comerun Head. So this is Champlain Park, as you come in off Comerun Head Road, Valhalla's right here, it's actually the second house in, and the carport is on this side of the house. It's all zoned R-three. Okay, so this is the house in question, here's the original driveway, here's the added carport right here, and then this semi-driveway here, because it'll look like, closer, I'm not sure, it's, uh, it's not paved right in it, kind of a dirt driveway.
No, actually, that's just taken away, it's, uh, request.
So, so we're looking at the, the space here in between, I believe this sits right on the property line. So here's what you see as of yesterday, so you can see, this is kind of a made-up driveway, and this space here, I believe that's right where the property line would be, and it'd be a zero setback. Okay, so this is what was turned in by the applicant. So, at this point, you can add or describe or what you like to the board.
I don't have anything to add.
Do I have anything else to add?
I took over the property, um, in January from my father. He got permission from the neighbor at that time, same, uh, neighbor we have now, to build that carport.
Okay.
He got the letter from him.
Okay, so, you, you took over the house in January?
Um, yes.
So he transferred the property into your name in January?
Yes.
Okay, do you know about when he actually built this carport, how long ago that was?
Four or five years ago.
Four or five years ago?
Yes.
So is it on the property line, or is it actually two feet off the property line?
Now, what are you, what are you reading?
Someplace I remember reading two feet off.
It's right here, see this, this line right here, that's the question mark, that's, that's zero.
Well, in the letter from Erica, it says, I am aware that it is two feet from my property line.
I think what she's pointing out is it's probably two feet from her driveway. But the, the equal distance between here and here, maybe the split of the, of the property line?
Well, I'm confused just because they're both, okay, Mr. Chris Sarach.
Chris Sarach.
He's the one saying it's two feet from his property line. So, I mean, that's two feet from, that's zero, and it's two feet onto her line.
Which one, are you reading the one from Bill Plumpton?
No, it's on the back of Erica's, to whom it may concern. On the backside of the sign, it says, the statement is, in regards to Erica Leonard's carport on the northwest side of her property. I am aware that it is two feet from my property line and have no objection to it being there.
Okay. Again, I believe it's, they're referring two feet off the, uh, the driveway, but not necessarily the, uh.
Property line, okay.
Yep. We also have a comment, well, when you get to the public here.
Public hearing portion of the meeting is open. Anybody here or on Zoom would like to speak to this matter?
So we did have one email that was from, uh,
Alan, you might want to announce that so that anybody can actually hear it personally.
Okay, if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to participate in the public hearing for this variance, for the one on Valhalla?
Can you unmute all of them at once here so they can talk if they want to?
While he's doing that, I'm gonna point out, William Plumpton, four fifteen Cumberland Head Road, sent in and said, I have no objection or issue whatsoever with said carport.
If anybody wants to mute, they should be able to mute themselves. Half of them muted themselves already, so I can't unmute them unless they have a minute.
What's that?
Alan Ross comes up.
Also had one from Erica Leonard?
It says the, the.
Let you, sorry. I was gonna, I started reading comments, I said, I ain't from the comment. Okay, so Drew's out in the parking lot checking to see if there's anybody out there that wanted to speak.
It appears that he might, he might have muted you by mistake.
By what?
He might have muted you by mistake, so I'll have to wait until he gets back down.
Do you have a shot on the right side of this?
No, I think you muted, or Drew, I think you muted Alan by mistake.
Okay, I'll, hold on a second. I'd like to be, sit down, one second. You can unmute yourself, Alan.
So that I can get my mouse over there.
So Drew, just for the record, you walked outside, there's nobody else here that wants to participate in this, correct?
And there was nobody on, no one made a hand gesture, anything on, uh?
There was one hand gesture from Heidi Klute, but I can't, she has to unmute herself. So Heidi Klute wants to speak.
Heidi, Heidi, can you hear me? If so, can you unmute yourself, if you have something to say about this variance? Okay, so.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Did you, did you have a comment? Did you have a public comment for this?
I, I put my hand up during Nissan, I had a lot of comments.
Oh.
Not during the public?
I can't see a picture of you.
Oh, well, here I am.
Okay.
Here I am. No, I had my hand up on Nissan.
There you are, now I can see you.
There you are. After the public comment, done.
Uh, I don't understand why different boards are allowed to interpret zoning in codes different ways. It seems to me very much ad hoc, and if I was the Huddings, I'd be thoroughly frustrated. And I think it really leaves the board open to more litigation by ad hoc decisions, by different boards' interpretation. And the attorney said it very well. There's pre-existing decisions that were made for all the other dealerships, yet they're interpreting it a different way. And it really makes it difficult as business owners in Plattsburgh to do business with Plattsburgh pound board when they make all these precarious decisions ad hoc based on interpretation.
What would happen if they were wrong eight years ago?
Did you hear that?
Then they have to overturn the other decisions they've made.
Well, once, once a variance is granted, advance runs with it. But, I mean, you're, you're talking about human error, you know? If that board at that time is more allowable than the board now, based off whatever reason, maybe the society is, uh, said, you know what? Plattsburgh's just going crazy with signage, we need to cut this back. Then the boards are gonna start making more decisions to not allow as much signage as they previously did. So, I mean, that's up to, the attorney can appeal that, and, uh, do you have an seventy-three hearing?
The attorney probably won't appeal it, and they'll probably win, and it'll cost the taxpayers money.
That, that's a possibility, that's their, their option. The board, the board made their decision, so.
That was my twenty cents.
Okay. Anything for this one?
It's illegal. It doesn't meet the side yard setbacks. Uh, it was pre-existing, non-conforming, but built illegally. I can't understand why it would be allowed to stay if I lived right next door, it was two feet from my side lot. You grant that, then you're allowing anybody to build these structures. Just because nobody discovered them doesn't mean that they're okay.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Heidi.
Be a great argument if they're, uh, putting Nissan for yet.
All right, we now, nobody has said to come out to address this variance, so we can close the public hearing portion of the meeting and ask for a emotion. Or anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns on this? I can tell from personal experience that many properties out that way have garages, that's about how big they are. It's not unusual at all.
I think I got a permit though.
Hey Drew?
Uh, years ago, I didn't even get permits.
Mute all image right inside of the screen. There you go.
Comments, questions from people?
I'd have to go on my gut. If this was before me at some other time, I would be saying, oh, so this is our location and it's proximity to the neighbor's yard, fire codes, whatever, there's no way to get around to the backyard. I would deny this if it, as it sits before me. I guess as a new application, I would not allow it if it wasn't already built.
Right, but it is built.
I understand that, so. Fire code hazard, whatever, I don't, I don't.
On the other side of the, the house, do you have room to get to the backyard at all?
Do you have any spannings on that, Alan?
There's a gate.
Can you, so do you have a?
There's a shed at the back of the carport.
So the, I'm not sure how much you have on this side, where the, probably the previous project was before, you get through. There's probably three or four feet, that's about, that's about it.
They've got another storage building back there too, right?
Yeah, this, this is just yet here, right?
No, I'm talking about on the, uh, main structure.
This is an addition right here, yeah.
So there's another one on the drawing here, there was another one on the, the right side of that.
I think it's the way it's drawn, if this is.
Some storage shed.
It doesn't look like it's on.
So, this, this is the addition in the back, and this is the carport.
Yeah, I see that. When you see where there's an eight by ten.
This right here?
There we are.
Not the.
So do you have a little shed right behind the carport?
Yes, yes, but that's, um, plastic one, you can move it.
So she has, she has a small, she has on the back right here, this one here.
Any comments? If you'd like to make a motion?
Russell, was that a motion you made or?
I'll make a motion that I would, uh, to deny the request.
I'll second that.
All right, show hands on that.
Henry Hill?
I would disagree with that.
Sherman Ruben?
Yes.
Fossa LaCorte?
Yes.
Roger Block?
Yes.
Marian Alzner?
No.
Okay, so for the, the variance for Valhaven, it was a three-two to disapprove for variance. So now, how long would you like to give her? You're gonna have to take that down, okay?
Normally sixty days or ninety days?
With everything going on, I'd say ninety right now. If you need people to come in and do some work, I think a little leniency probably does.
We'll stipulate ninety.
Ninety days.
Good with everybody?
Okay, so you have ninety days to remove it. Once it's removed, call us, let us know that it's been taken down, then we'll, uh, close out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ever gonna go out to Daniel's?
Is Tom retired or is it?
Uh, no, this one is Ollie's.
I'll buzz this Ollie's up.
Okay, we're, we're waiting for, remember to come back from the bathroom cell. Do you guys have anybody on Zoom that's part of your, your team?
It's like that gentleman, is that Jeff?
Jeff Revers?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you're off mute so that you can hear.
So he's with, uh, East West Signs.
Do you have anybody else?
And then the mall's gonna say a couple things when you open up to public, I guess is gonna be.
Okay, yeah.
Or however, they're the landlord, however you wanna do that part of it.
Okay.
And then, um, and then the other lady's gonna cycle in.
After, okay.
And he's gonna cycle out, yeah, so somewhere in between, I'm glad. Hundred inch light? Okay, let's check.
There we go.
Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, we're resuming. So we're at appeal number twenty-one eighty-three, A and B. Ollie's at Sixty Smithville Boulevard. Request to be allowed to install a hundred fifty square foot sign on the face of the building, which is sixty-six point six six square feet, more than the eighty-three point three five square feet allowed, as well as place an additional eighty-three square foot sign on the side of the building, which is not allowed in commercial district. So, Sixty Smithville Boulevard, as everyone knows, is Champagne Center, is the mall. So they're actually going in the old Gander Mountain, uh, area of the mall, which is on the backside right here. They're looking to place a sign here that faces towards Dix, as well as one that faces towards Ivy Seven. It's all zoned, commercial district. So here's a closer view. They're looking to put that hundred fifty square foot sign here on the front face of their, uh, space here, this tenant space. And then on this back corner right here, facing towards Ivy Seven, that's where the eighty-three square foot sign is going.
I have one comment to make that I normally recuse myself from this situation because of being my past position with the mall, but it's been fifteen years since I've been with the mall. So I am, think I can make a valid, solid decision at this time, thank you.
Okay, for all more concern?
Do you believe that prior employment still enables you to be impartial? Correct? Does the applicant want Mr. Hutter to recuse himself for this, or are you comfortable with him remaining as a voting member?
I am comfortable with his decision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Jeff, did you get, did you hear any of that? Yeah, you're muted right now.
Jeff, he's muted himself.
There you go.
Thank, does someone was disclosing a potential conflict of interest?
Right, so the chairman, Henry Hill, used to work for the mall, but it's been, uh, over fifteen years since he's actually worked for the mall. So in the past, he's recused himself, but he feels that now enough time has passed that there's no need to do that any longer. So we just asked that applicant, Jesse Daniels, if he had any problem with that. He, uh, didn't have any problem. So Henry Hill will remain as the chairman for this variance.
Thank you, I would agree, thank you.
Okay, so what's on the slide show now, that's, this is the front-facing portion where Ollie's is going in. That's what it looks like as of yesterday. And this would be that side facing Ivy Seven, they're looking to put the, uh, the smaller sign, eighty-three square foot sign on this side. Okay, so this is what was presented to us from the applicant, so this is the Ollie's symbol here, going on the front face. Um, they're showing other places where Ollie's gonna go, so we're not worried about the freestanding signs up there. The mall regulates that as a total space. They're pointing out some other areas in the mall that have signage. Here's the, uh, the smaller sign on the side that I pointed out to you. The square footages that I got are from right here. And let's go through these quickly, and then Jesse, we can come back to the ones you wanna talk about.
Yep.
Jesse, also take the same pictures I did, just letting them know. Dix, this is Dix across the parking lot. And that's it. Okay, so I'll go back to your beginning. Right there.
Okay. Hello, I'm Jesse with Daniel Signs, um, in front of the board many times.
Speak loud.
Can everybody hear me loud enough, or Jeff, two?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Henry?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the, uh, the, the square footage that they're asking for in the main entrance of the, of the sign is a hundred and fifty square feet. Um, the total frontage of that building, which used to be the old Gander storefront, is, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight linear feet long. Um, so the zoomed-in picture that you see now is just a, a small portion over the entranceway. Uh, that building is very, very long, uh, when you back up from the, the backside of the parking lot. If you're doing it from like the Dix entrance side, so if you're coming in from the north from that side of the parking lot, uh, when you come around that corner, you can actually visibly see that business as you're rounding that corner, if you're driving from the north into the parking lot. So that's, that's part of the distance and sizing scale, uh, along with the, the length of that building for that main entrance. Uh, the sign that they're asking for on this side of the building is approximately a third of what was there pre-existing with the, the Gander logo and all the Gander text and verbiage that was there before. Uh, there was a sign pretty much in that same location, uh, prior. And then there was another larger sign that was up above the roof line to the left of that, uh, in the, in the prior, uh, application for this facility. So they're only asking for approximately a third of what was existing, uh, prior. You want me to keep going on this specific one, or do you want me to just?
No, go ahead and do both of them, and then I'll come back and separate them.
Okay, and then so the, uh, the second sign is the sign, uh, facing, uh, the drive lane when you come in from the south. So if somebody coming in from Route Three, or even Snifffield, if they go counterclockwise around the parking lot, uh, this would give them some knowledge that Ollie's is still around the corner if they're hiding, driving north around the part, around the mall entrance, uh, around their, their perimeter of their building. And so they could see this sign to know they're heading at least in the right direction. And then if not, if that sign wasn't there, you know, they could potentially keep driving around the next side, see Dix, and, and not even see it behind them, because it's around tucked in that corner where that entranceway is. And so that sign that they're asking for is about half the size of the sign that was there, that was just taken down a couple months ago. Um, that was just permitted within the last year, I believe. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's about half the size that was just installed within the last year. Um, those letters are mounted on a raceway, um, and they would go right in the same exact location and tie into the same exact power that's at the facility.
Jesse, and your supplemental here?
Yep.
And the main sign over the main entrance area? You got two figures, one says two hundred and fifty square feet, and then another one, your other total area says one hundred eighty-one point two square feet.
So that drawing, I'm assuming that's a different drawing?
I think, it looks like what you did is, uh, you separated the square footage of the letters as opposed to the total top to bottom, right to left of the whole sign.
Alan, can you forward to just the front sign? So what's that, that says one fifty boxed in, right dead center of the whole drawing? That hundred and fifty square feet is everything boxed in? The part that's in the yellow is the two measurements of them isolated. So technically, it's a hundred and thirteen square feet?
So this is the typo, because it's saying two hundred and fifty square feet on my information.
Well, right, but what is, if you look at just the, the higher the letters, and I would argue that it looks like the apostrophe is probably a little higher than what you originally put on this.
Uh, no, it's, it's included, that's included in the whole.
So that's part of the eighty-something?
Yep, that's included in the whole fifty.
So, looking at it from top to bottom and left to right as a whole sign, as opposed to just looking at, say, good stuff, cheap, being just a hundred and thirty-seven inches long. You're looking at it from O to S and from the apostrophe down to the bottom of the line.
Yeah, overall boxed in.
Yeah, overall boxed in is, is the way that this measurement is calculated. And that's a hundred and fifty square feet. If you isolated them, there would be about a hundred and thirteen square feet.
All right, I'm just looking at what information I've got.
I'm not sure what the reasoning is. I know there's a couple of drawings in the beginning that, uh, that's kind of where they started at, was like two fifty size.
All right, so it's actually a hundred and fifty square feet is what we're looking at, not two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
There are two different sides.
The other one's eighty-three square feet. That goes on to the other corner.
That's a hundred and fifty.
No.
This one, this one right here goes on the front face and it's a hundred and fifty square feet as it is presented today.
So this one is the.
It must be an error of some sort. I'm not sure why, what that reasoning is.
So we don't have one for the eighty-three?
Yeah, we do.
Yep. This is the eighty-three right here. It's going to go on the side. And that's that calculation right there.
And so that sign's about half the size of what was there just, uh, within the last fiscal year. And, uh, the square footage, again, if you wanted to box that one out, is only sixty-four and a half square feet. If it was to shape, to, uh, uh, algebraic formula. Just giving you the information.
Right. Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter?
Uh, there's two people, uh, from, uh, the Pyramid Corporation. Um, there's one gentleman in here now, and then, uh, the, the lady on the, uh, is also going to cycle out, uh, when he steps out.
Okay, before anybody speaks, just want to point out that this did go down to the county. You had no meeting, so therefore the majority plus one doesn't apply. And if anyone, uh, on Zoom, we're now opening up the public hearing portion. So you got to make a gesture or unmute yourself, so Drew can, uh, do that. Go ahead.
What's up?
You're first, yeah.
Uh, good evening. I am Russ Monty. I'm the operations manager at Champlain Center. I just want to talk about, uh, the Ollie's signage. Uh, Ollie's is a major retailer and will have a large anchor location totaling over thirty-three thousand square feet in the prior Gander outdoor space at Champlain Center. The proposed Ollie signage would not cause any undesirable change and is in line with the rest of the signage that is currently on the exterior of the Champlain Center facility. The new Ollie signs are smaller than the signs that were recently removed from the same space. As prior tenants in this space, Gander Mountain had eight signs totaling eight hundred and forty-eight square feet, and Gander Outdoors had three signs totaling six hundred and fifty square feet, as compared to Ollie's, which is only requesting two signs totaling two hundred and thirty-three square feet. Champlain Center is located in the center of a seventy-five point five acre commercial property in the C Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District. The building on which the requested signage would be installed is substantially set back four hundred and forty, uh, feet from the highway, I eighty-seven, and six hundred and fifty feet square, uh, six hundred and fifty-seven feet back from Smithfield Boulevard, thus not creating a distraction to drivers from either roadway nor detracting from the aesthetics or character of the surroundings. The proposed signage for this major tenant will assist in directing the general public to the location and exterior entrance of the store, as well as, uh, to help indicate its location for emergency personnel. This is particularly vital in this case as the tenant does not have an in-line presence storefront inside the mall, nor does it have an interior entrance or signage, uh, inside to identify its location. This store is exterior only. Uh, we do not consider the request too substantial, uh, relative to the size of the store, the building, and the location. The proposed signage is the smallest size that is still proportionate and visibly appealing in relation to the existing structure and other signage in the neighborhood and surrounding area. The proposed variance will not impact the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or neighborhood properties. The neighborhood has various businesses and commercial enterprises with signage, almost all of which have, like, variances. The sign issue is not self-created, as Ollie's is simply trying to utilize the existing storefront and space available to them. Um, I just want to, you know, emphasize once again that this is an exterior-only, uh, um, store. There is no interior entrance at all.
Let me just, just to point out, when it was Gander Mountain, they did have an interior entrance. Ollie's didn't actually rent the entire space. They only have a section of it. Therefore, there is no interior entrance, is what he's getting at, going in. So you can only access them from this outside entrance. So it kind of, it kind of acts like a hobby lobby.
You know how large your space they're renting?
Thirty-three thousand square feet.
Okay, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Lisa Getty. I'm the mall manager. And Russ already addressed, uh, our request in terms of the code concerns. I would just like to appeal to the board, uh, in light of recent and current events. I'll be honest with you. Our ability to find and retain tenants here at Champlain Center was challenging enough pre-pandemic, before stores were shut down, and before looting of properties was a concern. Now, it's more.